Welcome, everybody. My first meeting. Take it easy on me. Mr. Banano, can you do a roll call, please?
Mr. Grippo. Dr. Hopkins. Ms. Inocencio. Mr. Jackson.
Here.
Ms. LaCour.
Here.
Ms. Maris.
Here.
Mr. Porter. Ms. Singh. Mr. Shabat.
Here.
Do you have a call?
Fantastic, thank you. Mr. Banano, can you also read the Open Public Meetings Act?
In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, public law 1975, Chapter 231 Sunshine Law, copies of the public meeting notice were sent to The Courier-News, The Home News Tribune, The Star-Lightfoot, The Franklin Reporter, Tap into Franklin Township, Franklin Township Clerk Manager, District Schools, Offices and Associations, PTO President, and posted on the district website.
Thank you so much. I will entertain a motion to go into confidential session.
Second.
Moved by Nancy, seconded by Laurie. Motion to adjourn to confidential session for the purpose of discussing confidential matters, including special education settlements, workers' compensation settlements, and personal matters. Minutes of the confidential session will be made public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. So moved. Let's go. Calling the meeting back to order. We've returned from confidential session, and when the confidential session, I guess, minutes of the confidential session will be made public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. We read this before. E, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where its stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Walter, can you read our mission statement?
Franklin Township Public Schools embraces its diversity, fosters excellent educational innovation, and empowers all students to achieve their highest potential.
Thank you so much. I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Moved by Nancy, seconded by Bill. All that approved, say aye. Aye, hearing, okay, great, so motion carries. Do we have a student representative here today?
No.
No?
Summary recess.
Okay, summary recess, okay, yeah, great. And so we will move right on to the presentation by Dr. Lohgren on the NJGPA and access.
All right, so we're just setting up the audio right now.
Sure.
This is the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment, which our juniors took in May.
Yeah, they're still working on their sound. You can use mine, too.
Testing.
Yep.
So our juniors took the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment in May. Also, that is the time our multilingual students took the access for L's assessment. So we're going to show both of those scores in just a moment. Alfred is checking the sound. As soon as we have our sound, we'll hit play. It's a 10-minute screencast that's being added to the district website. I think it goes through it slowly enough, but I'll answer all your questions right after we play it, and it will be posted up on the website for folks who aren't here tonight. And I have a good vibe. Alfred's going to nail this any second now. Followed by our access for L's results. The NJGPA is an exam given to all 11th grade students designed to measure the extent to which students are graduation-ready in English, Language Arts, and Math. The EL, I'd like to present, hello. This is Dan Lohgren, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction. I'd like to present to you our New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment results, followed by our access for L's results. The NJGPA is an exam given to all 11th grade students. It's designed to measure the extent to which students are graduation-ready in English, Language Arts, and Math. The ELA component is aligned to Grade 10 standards, and the mathematics component is aligned to Algebra I and Geometry standards. Each year, students are required to meet the cutoff scores for graduation. Again, as juniors, and if a student does not meet the minimum score, then in their, going into their senior year, they'll have the opportunity to receive additional supports and may take the following steps. They can retake the ELA and/or mathematics components of the NJGPA, or they can meet a designated cut score from the menu of substitute competency tests, or they can complete a portfolio appeals process. When you take a look at our recent results, pretty close to what they were last year, 77.9% of our juniors were deemed ready on this assessment as compared to the state in which 81.6% were deemed ready. In parentheses below that number are our numbers for last year. In mathematics, 46.5% met the cut score, whereas 54.7% of the state students met that cut score. When you look at the subgroup data for proficiency, the percentage of students proficient on the assessment in ELA, nearly 80% of our female students were proficient in ELA, whereas 45% were proficient in math, with our male students about 76% proficient in ELA and almost 47% in math, and 50/50 for non-binary students. When you look at different ethnic demographic data, you can see here Hispanic or Latino, the blue bar on the left is ELA, the gold bar on the right is Math, American Indian, Asian, Black or African-American, Native Hawaiian, White, two or more races. So the blue bar on the left is ELA, gold bar on the right is Math. Additional subgroup demographic data, multilingual learners, economically disadvantaged, students with IEPs, and students with 504 plans. So when you take a look at the math scores, you'll notice that the pool of students was larger this year, by 114 students compared to last year. Last year, 243 students were deemed graduation-ready. This year, 286 students were graduation-ready. Students with IEPs who are graduation-ready increased by 7.8% compared to last year, and seven out of the 10 subgroups had an average score of 725, which is the cut score, the passing score. This is likely due to targeted efforts and differentiated instruction to support diverse student groups in demonstrating graduation readiness. This year, in the 23-24 school year, we had a primary focus on differentiating instructional practices to enhance success rates across all student subcategories, and although the graduation readiness levels were slightly declined, the significant improvements in graduation readiness among students with IEPs demonstrates the effectiveness of differentiated instructional strategies implemented this year. When you're looking at ELA, you'll notice that 91 additional students were in the pool this year. So last year, 386 of our students were graduation-ready, and this year, 452 of our students were graduation-ready. Students with IEPs, graduation readiness increased this year by 7%, and students with 504 plans, graduation readiness increased by 18.8%. So similar to math, we focused on differentiated instruction, and even though overall graduation readiness levels declined, there were some significant improvements in graduation readiness among multilingual students, students with IEPs, and students with 504 plans. So in summary, it's important to note again, we had a large increase in the number of students in the pool. This likely influenced the overall readiness metrics, and while the overall percentage was slightly lower, the targeted efforts in differentiated instruction have notably improved graduation readiness for diverse student groups, such as those that we just showed, highlighting areas of success and opportunities for further improvement. When a student does not meet the graduation requirements via state testing or alternative assessments, the student can graduate using a portfolio constructive response task method, which is how we have, we've certainly been upwards around upper 80s to 90% graduation rate each year, as we do support our students, you know, with still some room for improvement. If you wish to contact our Supervisor of Secondary Math to learn more about the NJGPA, there is the email address right there. Our Supervisor of Secondary English, Dr. Kanika Chopra's email address is right there as well, or if you have questions for me, my address is on this document as well. So access for L's results, also from this spring. The access for L's is a suite of assessments used as a tool to measure English language proficiency annually to all K-12 students identified as English language learners. This assessment allows us to monitor student progress in learning academic English as well. Overall score is determined by 35% of it is reading, 35% writing, 15% listening, and 15% speaking, and the performance levels are entering, so students who are entering and just beginning to learn English, emerging, developing, expanding, bridging, and reaching. And the access results are a portion, a component of the ESSA accountability profile. So this year, 113 of our students out of approximately 856 who took the assessment were deemed, had a score either 4.5 or higher, or additional measures that are also used to exit the program. As you can see, the largest group of our students are in the developing category, which means that they're close to expanding and bridging, but that's the total breakdown of all students in the district, and here we're looking at just K-5 students. Again, similar pattern, you have a large number of entering, emerging, but developing, so students are right on the cusp of being in that 4 to 5 range of 4.5, which would potentially exit students from the ESL program. So 84 students in K-5, and in 6 through 12, 29 students. You can see the percentages here, entering, emerging, developing, expanding, bridging. So it is notable that in '24-'25, this upcoming year, our multilingual students in the bilingual program will benefit from fully-staffed bilingual homerooms, where bilingualism as a resource will be used to increase native language literacy and aid students in building the cross-linguistic bridge to English, thus increasing English language acquisition. The implementation of the new curriculum, Adelante, a core literacy program for K-5, will be used as bilingual support to strengthen students' native language literacy and, as a result, strategically increase English language proficiency. Also culturally and linguistically responsive instruction will continue to increase student motivation and academic performance with the addition of the International Alliance Group teachers who are working with our district in this coming school year. So if you wish to learn more about the access for L's assessment, and you'd like to reach out to our Supervisor of Bilingual and ESL Instruction, Ms. Carolina Smith, there is her email address on the screen, and also you are welcome to contact me if you have additional questions. Thank you very much. I hope you found this presentation to be helpful. Hello. All right, thank you. I do like that it's up there on the website, but it is always weird when I'm standing here listening to myself. You guys have played along so nicely, so. But I will say, whenever I do present the things, it does take longer, so at least it's about as efficient as can be, but I do want to take the time to answer whatever questions anybody has.
You should lipstick it next time. Walter?
No questions for me. Once again, thank you, great presentation.
Nancy?
Good job.
Erica?
You have a question?
Laurie?
I should remember this, Dr. Lohgren, but graduation readiness in the junior year, does that, is that defined as have already met the graduation level by their junior year, or does it mean they're on pace to meet the graduation level by their senior year?
Well, theoretically, I mean, this is the second year of this assessment, so kind of keep that in mind when you talk about that assessment, but it means that should they meet all of their other graduation requirements, they have to also meet a certain score in math and language arts, and if they do, then they're eligible for graduation. So what happens if someone doesn't meet that cut score in their junior year, there's still time for them to retake the test either the summer, the fall, or take alternative tests that are similar, or, when necessary, because some students just are not great test takers, do a portfolio assessment to demonstrate they know how to do all those skills, but maybe not in the sit-down-and-take-a-test mode, more like a, let me show you what I know, and go a little slower, but I can show you that I know it, and then they get credit for that in the portfolio.
So the 70-odd percent, let's say, that met, that made the mark in their junior year in ELA?
Still have to pass Senior English.
They'll have to pass their other English class, but assuming they do those other things, they're...
Yes.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Put some of the numbers in context for me, so thank you.
Bill?
The other night at the curriculum meeting, we had all of our questions answered in detail. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Yeah, I did have a few questions, so, and I did also have lots of questions before, and so thank you for all your hard work and for the presentation as well. But just double-clicking on, I guess, I don't know if we can go back to slide 12, but there was, there's a particular line there that I thought was really useful, which, within the, yeah, we'll just go back to...
That one?
Keep on.
And then?
Yeah, this one. So then, just the first point, but the last bit of it, where it says, "The targeted efforts and differentiated instruction have notably improved graduation readiness for diverse student groups." So I guess a few slides before that, you showed how, you know, kids with IEPs and so on are actually noticing, you were noticing a much higher trajectory upwards. So can you, can you double-click on that for me, just? What is it that we're learning from that, and how can we take that and apply that to all the other students so that we get those types of jumps there?
It's a great question. Usually, the, sort of the most challenging groups are ones who have special needs.
Right.
Right? And so the differentiation is showing success in those groups right now.
Right.
What was also pointed out was there was a much larger number in the pool. Many of those could be general edu, or likely general education as well as special needs, and the idea is, okay, we're doing a better job at differentiating, but clearly, we still have room to grow with the whole group.
Right.
So I think there's some pride in, look, we're showing success in the most challenging populations in terms of need. That's great. Let's make sure we get everyone's attention a little more, and make sure we're ready for that junior year assessment a little bit better, so that the general population sees those same kinds of growth patterns next year.
Right. But are there, like, more specific things that you saw in working with that population that you can pull and sort of extrapolate across the general population? Because those are some great growth numbers, like really fantastic growth numbers.
I would, to answer that, I would say, this is what we have been drumming, beating the drum on especially since the pandemic, that, wow, we have to make up for lost ground, and it's a significant, you know, situation students across the country are facing.
Yeah.
And, you know, we want to be out of it yesterday, we want to be out of this last year, but we're still overcoming what was challenging a previous year, so it's still, you know, it's still incremental, and we want to kind of flick a light switch and be back to normal, but this takes some time. Plus, I think Dr. Valli's going to point out about some of our other demographic challenges.
No, I think Valli's going to point out... What is it, if that works? Well, I think what Sammy is saying is, what can we emulate that might be working well with, for example, special needs population at, and in the general ed population? So one of the things I can point to is, we have, and for a number of years now, with our reading program, our English Language Arts program, at the special ed level at the high school, we've been utilizing Chief 3000. We hadn't so much been really relying on until this year, introducing IXL, correct, at the secondary...
Right, it's now at our middle school level. We had used it for math in the high school, correct?
So I think we're starting to learn that, you know, we maybe need to introduce some of that progress monitored type of support, like they've been doing for the last couple of years in special education at the high school level as well, so we've been working on that. I think that's what you might have been driving at.
Yeah.
Yeah, there are definitely things that we have to now dissect and dive into to say, hey, what helped to create those numbers, and how can we emulate that in, with the general education population?
Yeah, like, if you're doing that with the toughest population to do that with, then whatever we're learning there, extract, you know, using that with everybody else, I mean, shoot, if we can have those numbers with our general, then that, that would be fantastic.
It's a great point, and Dr. Valli, thank you for reminding me. We also have a person who's really in her second full year as the Supervisor of English, for example, just talking English right now, and one thing that she's been working with her teachers and with Dr. Solomon on at the high school, is looking for something that mimics a little bit more of those successful parts of the workshop model that exists naturally at the middle school level, so that we're not sort of treating all the kids the same way in English class, but more like, okay, let's read something together, but then you read something independently, and let me go address student need, you know, specifically and more in a targeted fashion.
Right, right. That's all I had. Thank you so much, Doc.
Awesome, anything else?
No, I think we're good.
Mr. Banano?
Oh. Thanks so much, Doc.
All right, thank you. Boss?
On to the superintendent's report?
Yes, no problem. As soon as I turn this thing on again. I just want to make everybody aware that extended school year ended today. It was an exciting program attended by a number of kids. We had well over, I think, not to be quoted, but somewhere in that neighborhood of around Excellent program. We had Abilities Day on Tuesday, the 23rd, which is like a celebration kind of ending the program, and we picked Tuesday because it was supposedly the nicest of the days, which is why we didn't reserve for today, although today didn't turn out so bad, but, you know, that was more or less a carnival, and it was, you know, the kids had a blast, and it was really a nice time. I was over there, you know, bouncy houses and ice machines and fire trucks, and it was really a good way to kind of end the year and start the summer for kids who did a little extra work during the month of July. So kudos to the team that planned and implemented our program, kudos to the teachers, the kids, their phenomenal job, the parents, really was a huge success, and I just wanted to make sure that I said thank you. Other than that, it is July, so I'm going to turn it over to you when you're ready.
Thanks so much, Doc. On to the Board Vice President's report, since our president, Artemin, is out, she told us that she'd be out. Let's see, alumni success continues. We recently learned that Franklin High School alumni Josh Gower, class of 2021, who currently plays baseball at Rutgers, was drafted to Major League Baseball Oakland Athletics as the 75th overall pick. Amazing. Congratulations to Josh and his family. The number of professional athletes we have coming out of here is fantastic. Secondly, staff success celebrated. Towards the end of 2023-2024 school year, we learned that the Franklin High School teacher Rochelle Gordon was awarded the Regional Computer Science Teaching Excellence Award from the Computer Science Teachers Association. Congratulations to Ms. Gordon as well. And I'd like to just give a quick update on the Franklin FISC project. Many of us here are aware of that. We, as a Board of Education, teamed up with the Township Council a little bit over a year ago to solve one problem in our town, which is the food insecurity and safety of our, of our entire population, and we had our meeting yesterday summarizing sort of all of the pieces that we had done the past, the previous two meetings, where we had about a three-hour session. We invited everyone here, but all of the key stakeholders from around town, many of the key stakeholders from around town, to literally map out food insecurity in our town, a venture that had never been done before. So if you were to mind-meld the 50, from Township Council to the YMCA, to 70 Houses of Worship, to a lot of our staff and teachers that came from our schools and principals, put that all together in a room and try to figure out what are the most prevalent issues that we see in front of us for food insecurity, and then how do we prioritize those things, and then now put specific numbers, and then stack them all against each other, pressure test it in a room against each other, and then have a final list. That's exactly what we now have for Franklin. And so yesterday, we actually, within the room, and everyone here is welcome, and whoever would like from the audience to come, to now work on those projects. So we now have a list of projects and joint ventures that are out there to actually fundamentally move the needle, actually not even just move up a curve of food insecurity, but move to a completely different curve of food insecurity. And just as a, kudos to us, the Mark Englandon, who's a food insecurity expert for New Jersey, he's the only expert under Governor Murphy, he's hired, actually mentioned that Franklin is the only town that he knows of right now that organically is doing this in all of New Jersey, and he wants to model this in all the other towns of New Jersey. So this is a huge step forward, hopefully, for our township. The Food Bank, prospectively going to the PGM campus, is just one of the things that came out of these FISC meetings, so anybody who'd like to attend, you're more than welcome. We will announce the date for our next meeting in the future. That is all I had for the Vice President report. I'd like to now open it up, two comments from the public. I don't see much public here, but five minutes for Speaker, agenda items only, I guess Bill if you...
So moved, Mr. President, open to the public?
Second.
Moved by Bill, seconded by Laurie and Nancy.
Seeing no one from the public coming forward, I move to close the public session.
Is there a second? Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Do we know specifically that we...
That's sad. He said he waved. Great. So because we had the presentation tonight, and because we're running a little bit late from our confidential session, we will waive the committee liaison reports for tonight, and they're all posted online, if you'd like to review them, they're all there. On to new business.
Can you do mine?
Of course.
I'd like to make a motion to move R1 Monthly Reports, M1 Minutes of Board Meetings, A1 Travel and Related Expense Reimbursement, A2 Affirm Harassment, Intimidation, and Bullying Decisions, A3 Special Education Settlements, A4 Reimbursement, A5 Donation, a $500 donation for Mayor Kramer for the High School Pace Club, $500 gift card from Wegmans Princeton to be used for staff needs, and a $500 gift from Mr. and Mrs. Garoff to be used towards student meal balances. A6 Safety and Security Statement Assurance, A7 2024-2025 PEA Budget Revision, A8 Student Safety Data Report, A9 Code of Conduct, A10 Facilities Use, A11 IDEA Grant Submission, A12 Semi-Reimbursement Corrective Action Plan, A13 Comprehensive Equity SOA Submission, A14 Revised Policies, Second Reading and Adoption, A15 Revised Policies, First Reading. B1 Warrants and Payrolls, B2 Financial Reports, B3 Contract Approval, which goes from A to JJ. B4 Change Orders Aren't Any At This Time, B5 Award of Bid, School-Based Health Clinic, B6 School Breakfast, Lunch, and Milk... B6, school breakfast, lunch, and milk prices, 2024-2025 school year. B7, fiscal year, 24-25 insurance renewals. B8, deferred compensation. B9, third-party administrator. B10, state aid reimbursement. B11, ASRS reimbursement. C1, out-of-district students, 2023-2024, 2024-2025 school year. C2, field trip destinations. C3, field trip applications, aren't any at this time. C4, computer science grant funds. C5, ESA consolidated grant funds for fiscal year 2025. C6, ESA consolidated grant fund fiscal year 2025 application. C7, Frankton Public School, 2024-25 emergency plan for virtual or remote instruction. C8, new courses. C9, new textbooks. C10, Franklin High School, Franklin Middle School athletic schedules. C11, athletic ticket pricing for 2024-2025. C12, NJSIAA fall season start dates. P1, worker compensation settlements. P2, increment withholding. P3, personnel report.
Well, that was a mouthful. Okay. Thanks so much, Nancy, for that. So just to summarize, there's a motion to move R1, M1, A1 through 15, B1 through B11, C1 through 12, P1 and P3. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Great. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, roll call. Yes, please. Mr. Banano, roll call.
Mr. Grippo?
Yes.
Ms. Inosensio?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. LaCour?
Yes.
Ms. Maris?
Yes.
Mr. Chavon?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Thank you so much. We will now open to comments from the public. Again, five minutes per speaker, any topic. Moved by Nancy. Seconded by Walter. All in favor? Aye. Okay.
Aye.
We are now open to comments from the public.
Saying no one.
Motion made by Nancy to close. Seconded by Laurie. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. We are now moving on to good of the order. Erica, can you please kick us off?
Just hoping that everyone is enjoying their summer so far and being safe out there. And that's really all I have to add. Thanks.
Oh, thank you. Laurie?
I echo Erica's comments and also hope that you're starting your summer reading in your math. Don't forget about it. Don't leave it to the last minute.
Great. Bill?
Yeah, I just want to piggyback on what Vice President Chavon said about the food, the FISC committee, Food Insecurity Committee. The tie-in with the Board of Education and the YMCA is really about health. You know, having the availability to give food to people is one thing. Teaching nutrition is something that we need to look at as a school district. I actually talked to Dan about putting that on a curriculum committee because there's a direct parallel with nutrition and health and learning and test scores and all that stuff. There's a direct parallel. And so the FISC committee has an education component to it. Our superintendent sits on it. Two board members sit on it, Sammy and I, and a whole cadre of people, as he mentioned, the ministerial committee. So if people eat better, they learn better. And so I would just suggest that we all, as board members, keep our ear to the track. Sammy's doing great work with that. So is Derek Smith at the Food Bank. The Food Bank is doing a phenomenal job for people. It's really amazing. And so I just wanted to piggyback on what he said. That's it.
Thanks so much, Bill. Walter?